Could you all rise for the? Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to open the public meeting for the January 16th, 2024 Flag Harbor zoning board of appeals? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The first item on the agenda is the minutes. I had a couple of corrections which I gave to Carrie. Does anybody else have anything, comments? Tim, you had found something in the minutes?
Hang on, I passed it on. Other than that, I have no comment.
Okay, great, thank you. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 19th, 2023 meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is correspondence requiring action, which is 11 Henry Street for a request to approve a one-year variance to their, I mean, a one-year extension to their ZBA variance.
Make a motion to extend this one year.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. So now we come to old business. And because we only have old business on the agenda, we're going to implement one of our procedural resolutions, which allows applicants 10 minutes to speak and members of the public three minutes to speak. Those times can be extended if it's necessary based on the determination by the board. So the first item on old business is 28 Jefferson Street. You've all been sworn in previously. Could you just state your names and addresses for the record? Thank you. So you may proceed.
So the board is aware with this application by now the pressure applicant is looking to restore a pretty historic building in the historic district. No modest addition in pool. We've had long round of feedback from the neighbors and from the board. And in response to that feedback, applicant has made many concessions, including removal of the outdoor kitchen, the retaining wall, the raised patio, reducing the size of the addition, and most recently reducing their post pool from a 10 by 18 to a 10 by 15.7, completely reducing the need for engineering yard at the sake of time. I'm going to ask the board if you would like to take a copy of the review of the proposal. But I think it's been a long time. So if you have any questions, I will answer them now.
I just had one question for Liz. So as it stands now, the pool is only requiring one variance, which is two side yard of 10 feet where 15 feet is required. The lot coverage is not considered a variance, correct?
Right, because it's being reduced.
Because the lot coverage is being reduced, okay. So are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
Nope, I'm in favor at this point.
Okay. Without you have any?
I think I would make a comment. The, the pool as it is in a rear yard, it's in the neighbor's side yard. And there has been a reduction, but I think that he'd like to hear if the neighbor has continued comment, like to hear that comment.
Okay. Damon, do you have any questions? Do you have any comments or questions?
I disagree with Val. I think that I like to hear from the neighbor and see if that appeases them as well.
Okay. Cam, do you have any?
I'm still committed to where I said last time. I'm not in favor of placing a pool.
Okay, and Tim? I'm guessing that you're not in favor of the pool as it is?
Not, I'm not in favor of granting variances for the pool.
Okay, great. I think that my position is that because we grant variances with less setback to sidelines and because that's the only variance that I would be in favor of it. But I would want to put a stipulation in that there are a couple of mitigating factors. One is that there's a garage building adjacent to that side which blocks sound. And, but I would want that stockade fence to be a sound absorbing fence from the, I guess it would be the south corner of the property down to where it ends just before the driveway. I mean, that, that's would be important to me so that the we're blocking any sound on that property, on that side of the property from impacting the adjacent neighbor. Do you guys feel about that?
Sounds good.
Okay. Do you have any more comments? We'll just open it up to the public and see if there are any comments. Okay, great. Is there anyone from the public in the audience to speak to 28 Jefferson Street? Please, you may step forward. If you state your name and address for the record.
Yes, 72 Roncon Lane and 50 Drew Street.
Great.
So the pool, my understanding, I just found out today, the pool is still going to be 10 feet on our side, basically.
Right.
So requiring, should be requiring anything really on our cap. Two other neighbors up the road, basically, are still going to be kind of playing side even more so. Our house windows face, the bedroom faces 90 degrees. So, but my neighbor's house, he couldn't make it tonight. His house's bedroom is basically by the side across our 50 foot wide block. So it's 60 feet of cool, basically. So I still feel, I still object to the pool because it is a crowded little lot. So it's too, too much for the block. Too much load for it. And, you know, it could be a problem potentially for the neighborhood. So I still have objections to putting a pool in such a small confinement lot, basically, small backyard, very small, because the house is quite large. That's just my few minutes of
Okay.
comments, everything.
Do any of the board members want to ask any questions? No questions. Okay, great, great.
Anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just going to support my neighbor, that's all.
Can you just state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, my, my name is Susan Mead and I'm in 5 Suffolk Street. And it's Gannon that would be affected and his property. And if he has an objection, I stand with him.
Okay, great, thank you. And nobody else popping up? Okay, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Sure, so just two things regarding privacy for the neighbor. So the current structure lies three feet from the property line. And there are windows, one window specifically, it's three feet from the property line. Applicant is proposing to reduce the overall windows, some of which line three feet from the property line, and replacing it with siding. So you're actually granting the neighbor a lot more privacy than what exists on the premises now. And there's no screening back there and there's no fencing. So we're removing windows, adding six foot fence, which was love the soundproof, and adding a lot of screening. So there's going to be much more privacy afforded to the neighbor. And also, pull our comment in that neighborhood, which is not, it's inaccurate to say.
Could you maybe describe just on that property line, what the vegetation you're proposing to plant there? Just so everybody understands, the height and spacing? And I guess the variety of what you're putting there?
We have green giants, M O Green, 10 to 12 foot that are running right along the property line there. And they would be spaced about two to two foot six apart, all right along with
So they'll basically create a hedge of 10 to 12 feet.
Yeah, 10 to 12.
And that'll start, you know, right at the the southern corner of the house.
Great. Do any members of the board have any more questions?
I'd make, I'd just make one comment. It's my experience. My house has no pool, but there are two pools, one on either side of my house. They were both built with the setbacks according to the code. My experience is that there's nothing you can really do to mute or lessen the sound of, of people using a swimming pool. Except distance. And even the code 15 feet is not enough to, to do anything about the sound. People get loud around swimming pools. Plus, there's often music. That's all, thank you.
Great, so what we would normally do now is close the public hearing and then we do a straw poll. Do you want us to do that before we close or? Okay, so I don't know, how are?
I'm in favor. I think they've done a lot and they've gone a long way to accommodate our concerns and requests. There's precedent for lots of pools in the village, including those with setback variances. This doesn't seem like I could particularly agree just once five feet. And I just, I think I'd have a hard time denying them a pool when there's precedent for others being allowed to have a pool.
Okay, in light of the opposition and the fact that the neighboring parcel is being treated, it's a side yard to the neighbor at number 5 Suffolk. So in fact, this pool encompasses a good portion of their house in terms of their privacy. It's not a rear yard to rear yard situation. This, this pool is parked right on the side of their house. And I think for those reasons, with the objection of Mr. Gannon, I would venture to say that the 50% coverage of this parcel is excessive to the point where I'm okay with the additions to the house, but I have concern with the pool. And I'm going to vote no on the pool, but yes on additions to the home.
I would just like to clarify one thing. So the land to the south, that is a driveway. That is not Mr. Gannon's property. That is Susan Mead's property.
That's right. And if you look at this aerial photograph, you can see how the pool relates to the entire side of her structure.
That's a driveway.
Correct.
Even though we don't need a rear yard variance?
Well, the fact is that the, if it could be made smaller, there's discussion at the last meeting to reduce the size of the pool, which it has. But the, you've brought excellent arguments in favor of the pool in terms of precedent. But this lot is covered at 49.7% to the point where it's, it's a pre-existing condition, but it's, it's quite excessive. So reduction, a further reduction of the pool would be helpful. And I think it would appease Mr. Gannon that something is more code compliant.
Respectfully, but we don't need a variance for the coverage. Right now, the coverage is higher than what applicant is proposing. And even Board Member McGuire commented, no matter how small you make a pool, whether it's 10 feet or 11 feet or 12 feet, that sound is going to be there. And I, I'm having trouble understanding the how, since we have brought the pool in compliance with the rear yard, how that property is being considered for a denial for a pool. And we've thought through great lengths, making many concessions on this project, most recently cutting this pool way down in size to eliminate a whole variance required. It doesn't seem fair when compared to other variances that have been granted by this board for bigger pools on more difficult lots, especially when it's a driveway on the other side of this property line. When there's usually cars parked there. It's not a backyard, they're not sitting there at their tables or the driveway. And I've seen in prior determinations, that being a mitigating factor, certain structures and improvements being on the other side of a property line.
These are definitely good points. I'd like to hear what, if Miss Mead has further comment.
So why don't we continue through the board doing our straw poll and then we'll see if Susan is still there and wants to make additional comments.
Today, though, right? We don't get to vote today.
Um, I don't know. Carrie, does Damon get to vote today?
Because?
Because Tim is on, Tim can't vote, correct?
No, Tim can vote.
Oh, he can vote? Okay.
But we don't need an alternate vote.
Okay, no.
Doesn't it make more sense to hear from Susan, a neighbor, before the others weigh in with their thoughts?
We can do that, that's, that's fine.
Guys, I'm a little confused. I thought normally when you do a straw poll, you close the public hearing and do a straw poll. So you're now having an additional public hearing. So all I can do is say that if, if Gannon believes it's a problem to have a setback variance granted from his size of, side of the yard, and I can truly understand that, then it's, I support my neighbor.
The question has come up, though, about your personal feeling about the pool. Maybe you could address the question.
I'm confused as to why my personal opinion matters, but I will tell you that we had a lot of screening and there were two big trees that provided that. And they're, they're now gone. And I understand that they're doing additional screening. I would like to know the height of the screening that will be planted. I mean, what the height is when it's planted on my yard. But, you know, of course, pools are noisy. I'm the one that swims in my pool, so I'm not the one creating a lot of noise. But it, Gannon is the one that is going to experience the impact. And I agree that there is an impact from a pool that it's too close. So that's my comment.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
So based on that, the five foot variance is something that has precedent. And therefore there is mitigating point in here. As a driveway.
There's a lot of, I don't think there is a lot of precedent on a lot that's already so overbuilt.
And I, and I agree with Tim's statement. It is wildly overbuilt. My pool is a variance pool, no variance pool. And I intentionally avoided variance because of additional proximity to my neighbor.
I don't think that's appropriate.
No, no. Yeah, we can't, we, we can hear from one person at a time. There can't be a discussion between the public and the board and attorneys like that. So Val, do you want to just continue your comments?
So the addition, I can say yes, can improve, but the pool is still have concern that the neighbor is objecting. And if it could be made smaller, it would be agreeable.
So as it stands now, you're not really in favor. I come in sort of agreeing with Alex. I think this is, I'm very much on the fence, but since we're now down to one variance on that side and because there's a building adjacent to the pool, which we've used as a mitigating reason for granting other variances that are smaller than this. And if the applicant would do a sound absorbing fence along that with the 10 to 12 foot high screening, I would vote in favor, I guess.
Well, we initiated with 16 variances for a small piece of property. And as I look at it, they've done, made some changes. But I still feel that with all the size of the area, putting a pool and objections from the neighbor, I would vote negative.
Okay, great, thank you. And Tim, I'm guessing your vote is still negative for the pool?
Yeah, it's based on respect for our code. And at what point does a lot have too much going on? If we had no testimony from any neighbor at all against this, I would still be against it.
Great, thank you. So, so you, we have a very mixed thing here. Do you want to adjourn this again? Do you want us to close and actually vote? What do you want us to do at this point?
I would like to ask Board Member Florio, if there was anything that we could do, you know, in reviewing the other precedent, reviewing the other determinations that's granted for similar lots with setbacks for bigger pools, larger setbacks. We have done all the mitigating factors. We have, we have reduced the pool balancing test that you are doing. It's not whether the neighbor is opposing the application, it's whether there's a detriment to the community. Is there a detriment to the environment? Is there some other method feasible? You run down this list, we, we've built these balancing factors. And so I don't think it's fair for one objection to, to kill a variance. It doesn't seem like that is allowed by the code either. So I would, I would like to know what exactly we could do that would appease the board with regard to pools.
That's one thing that would be that if the pool was narrower, it would be farther away from the Gannon property. That's, that's, I believe that that's what you're heading towards.
We did on 68 Madison, the pool was eight feet wide. And, you know, part two of our test is to say whether there's an alternative solution that would not require variance. And oftentimes there's not. But we can mitigate those things by, you know, asking for possible decrease. I don't believe that the difference between 10 foot and eight foot, you know, is going to resolve the potential concern of the neighbor. The public comment is closed. You've demonstrated you've got 10 foot plantings. So I don't, I don't know. I, I think that the if, if there's something, as Mr. Chairman had said, that would mitigate the sound in terms of a permanent fence, and perhaps that would be acceptable.
So if we had?
Yeah.
Yes, we have, we have agreed to a sound area front.
Can I just say one thing, which is I'm a little uncomfortable because I haven't heard this. I've been on the board for now three or four years. And I think Tim's argument is a sound one, which is that he would vote against this regardless of what the neighbor thinks. But I've heard two of the objections here citing the neighbor's objection as a reason to turn this down. And I'm uncomfortable with that because there's all kinds of proposals that neighbors aren't going to like. A, I'm with her. And B, there is a fairness issue in that, and I don't disagree. It is, there's a lot, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of lot coverage and that is unfortunate. But on the other hand, there's pools all over the village. And I just think if you get a, create a precedent where if a neighbor objects to a pool, you can shut it down. I, I think that's problematic because then where does it end? Neighbor doesn't like a certain kind of fence you do. I know, those things should be taken into consideration.
Consider the impacts to neighboring properties from variances. It's one of the, one of the five part tests.
But it's not the single determining factor.
It shouldn't be a single determinant.
It's a balance.
Hearing over emphasis on that. I'm a big fan of Mr. Gannon's. He's a friend and I get my, my stuff repaired by him. So I'm sympathetic for sure.
And I, I mean, I agree with Alex. I think that the property is overbuilt. There's a lot of stuff on it, but it's, it's, it's already existing. If you were, didn't have a lot coverage in place, this would be a non-starter for me. But the lot coverage is already in place and you're reducing it. And that's sort of where I'm coming in on that aspect of it.
And objectively, we are creating a benefit to surrounding me. We are taking the current house, we are improving it, we are adding vegetation, we are reducing the coverage, we are adding drainage, we are improving the premises. So as far as that balancing factor, it does weigh in applicant's favor.
Hey, guys, may I speak? Is that okay? Since it?
We, no, we have not closed the pardon me?
We've closed it forever.
No, just a second? No, no, we haven't. So we'll let you make one more comment and then we'll decide about closing the public hearing.
Okay, well, my only comment is a 10 by, what is it now, 15 foot pool? It starts to be not a pool. It's basically is an item that when you put it on a sales brochure, you can say you have a pool. So at some point, we're really talking about a large hot tub. And to say that the neighbor's response is not the only issue, there are a lot of issues. And it's not just the, the community impact or whatever the issues are. If you go through the checklist, there may be more than that. So, you know, I implore the, the board to listen to Gannon. He's been true and he's been good about the additions that are being done to this property. And he is, candidly, he is the most impacted of any of us.
Yes, and we understand that. But we, we are looking at all five of our determining factors, not just that particular one. So it's a balancing thing. So thank you for your comment.
Are we going to, are we closing?
Well.
I'd like to ask Board Member Florio
Is this, is this now a debate session where I say something and she gets?
Susan, we're, we're, we're asking the attorney one more question and then we're going to close the public hearing and deal with this. So no, there's no, we're not debating this. Okay, could you, do you want to?
For Member Florio, is there any other mitigating factor we could add? So, so, so far, we are, we have reduced the windows, we are giving more privacy to the neighbor, we are building a fence, we have 10 to 12 feet, but vegetation. There's also a pool to the premises south of him already existing. So pool noise is not going to be new to this homeowner. So I would really like to hear from you. I think we are close. I know that you guys probably don't want to see me next month. We would like to wrap this up. And so if there's something else that we could do now, I know the homeowner would be willing to do it.
I'm persuaded. Given the fact that the request is this much, I was going to ask for an eight foot pool. So with this dimension reduction, it really doesn't change. And there is precedent. Fellow board members have raised good points. And you have screening, substantial screening, 10 foot tall, 12 foot tall, plus a fence. So I would be inclined to say yes to the pool.
Great, so are you, you, okay, great. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing for 28 Jefferson Street? All in favor?
I'll second it, aye.
Aye, great. Oh, I'm sorry, second. Okay, so we don't really need to take another straw poll unless there's a change. We have a three to two, which is an important thing to message out there because this is a very difficult decision and it's not a unanimous decision. So could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable determination for the variances required for 28 Jefferson Street? determination for the variances required for twenty eight Jefferson Street?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Two opposed.
We're dealing with a sausage.
Great, thank you. Right. Next on the agenda is forty one Redwood Ave, twenty six Cove Road.
Good evening.
Oh.
I am up here.
Great. Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Tiffany Scarletto, forty five Division Street, Sag Harbor for the applicant. Um, my client is in the audience this evening, um, and I am away, so I am appearing to you via Zoom. But I I think we are here just for a brief reason, and that is to just let the board know that we've reached out a number of times to the neighbors with respect to having a conversation about this house and what the proposal could look like. And thus far, those reach outs have been pretty unsuccessful, unsuccessful, which is very disappointing. It appears as if the conversation just can't occur. So for whatever reason, um, I really wish that people would be a little more um cooperative in nature. So I guess that's the only point that I'm here to make this evening. We will be back next month with um some updated designs for the board to review.
Can I just ask? So in in terms of just uncooperative, they're they're not willing to meet or?
Exactly. Said, no, no, thank you. We'd rather not.
Okay, all right, great. Do you guys have anything else to add before we get a little public comment? That.
We're reducing the house and making some changes.
Can you step up to the straight? That's okay. And just and just state your name and address for the record? Great.
We're reducing the house a bit. Trying to make it conform more. And we've made some good.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, yes, I know. So uh, if you guys have no other comments, we'll ask for comments from the public and then um we'll adjourn this to the next meeting. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there someone in the audience who would like to speak? Please step forward. Can you state your your name and address for the record?
Herb Samuel, twenty two Cove Road.
And you've spoken before.
I have.
Okay, so you've sworn in before. You may proceed.
So just very briefly, uh, the applicant seems like a very nice guy, but there must be some kind of miscommunication here. Because uh, I've had a very brief conversation with uh my attorney on this, John Tarbit. But uh, I I can honestly say and truthfully say that there's never been uh any kind of uh outreach to me in terms of a of a of a real sit down or anything like that. I mean, and beyond that, it's really not what I want. It's I mean, you know, what uh approval of a house of this scale with this number of variances would mean in the setting uh process. I mean, I I would like to say again for the record, both Tiffany and the applicant, I'm I'm more than happy to speak. But it's it's not what I want really. It's there are also other neighbors that have other serious concerns. And uh, we're open to a thorough process on this. Again, it has to be about the zoning code. This kind of environmentally and otherwise constrained law.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
By May, I'd just like to say that Mr. Samuel is a member of the Harvard committee, but he wasn't here speaking on behalf of the Harvard committee tonight. He was speaking for his own cell as a neighbor.
Great, thank you. Yes, please step forward. I, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Harvey, twenty one Cove Road.
Great.
Property across the street. I voiced my concern before it's all on record. But I was just wondering if this board could actually ask or request that this building be staked on the property? Because there is a tremendous concern that the entire footprint of the building sits streetside or in front of the neighbor on Redwood and on on um Cove. Basically, the back wall of the building is in front of both of those houses.
Right.
So approaching Redwood, you would literally drive down, go to the causeway and be looking right at the side of this building. It's going to look like it's in the middle of the intersection. So, you know, as an architect, we've always been taught, you keep the streetscape since you keep the door sides, you know, to escape. Or at least attempt. So I'm just hoping that in their redesign, they do it outside. But my real question is, is it possible to request a staking of a building?
Um, I don't think it's anything we've ever done, but I believe that we can do that. Correct, Liz?
No, we've never required that. And you're supposed to treat applicants the same.
Okay, so since we've never.
Being on a survey should be sufficient for the board's review.
Okay, so how about can you request a um comprehensive site plan? Since they have not, we haven't seen one. So hoping on a redesign, it happens. Complete with drainage, retaining walls, setbacks, neighboring set thick system. And just, I don't see how that's.
Um, but that's something we can request, a comprehensive site plan.
You can request it. It's it's whether it's listed on the um application requirements.
Right.
Application. So Carrie, we know what's what's submitted. I know we definitely need a survey.
Yes.
We have a revised site plan that we submitted quite a while ago for the board. And I don't, at this point, I don't know that there's any point in going back and forth over what the board can ask for because we don't have a set of plans yet that we.
Okay, I would like to say that as part.
I think we're jumping ahead a little bit.
Okay, their coverage issue, they have an address.
We have no coverage issue.
You would if you.
Not gonna argue with him tonight.
Wait, no, no. Tiffany, could you just let him finish because we can't have a discussion here?
The comprehensive site plan, you would see that there are retaining walls necessary. There's more parquet necessary, there's more drainage necessary, which will impact block.
Right.
So also the placement of the house, it needs to go closer to water or closer to the street. Additional coverage issues. So I'm just, you know, I've been in town a long time, play the game up for both teams. They have some other issues that they're not trusting. I'm just asking this board to possibly investigate.
Right. I guess we really can't do any of that till we see what they're going to propose because we don't, at the moment, there is no proposal.
So also nothing if there's substantial redesign, that's why there needs to be new posting.
Well, it depends. Uh, if the the requests are less than what they've been asking for, then no. If they if they if some particular aspect creates a greater variance required, then yes, there would be new posting. But if they reduce everything, then there is no new posting required. Great, all right. Thank you for your comments. Uh, is there anyone else from the audience? Yes. Please step forward, uh, state your name and address for the record.
Dawn Harvey, twenty one Cove Road, Sag Harbor.
Great, thank you. Oh, could you raise your right hand? That's true. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Great, proceed.
Last time I looked, the variance posting was down. I'm not sure if it took it down, but does that that should happen, stay up, correct, while this is going on?
Uh, I that's I don't I don't know if it has to stay up. Does it have to stay up, Liz?
No, not for adjournments. It doesn't need to be reposted for adjournments. You're talking about the posting?
Yes, the physical posting on the property.
Once the initial, this has been adjourned several times, no.
Okay.
So once the initial, uh, once we have the meeting.
You have to follow the. Yeah, from month to month.
Unless there are changes and it has to be reposted.
My only other um comment would be that when you're looking at the site plan, you really have to look at the road because part of the property is almost on the road. So a lot of times the road is usually like empty or so.
Right.
Back, but this one is close and it's a very, you know, it's it's a it's a difficult little corner there. So that's something that really has to be put back.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone on Zoom, Carrie? Ready?
No.
Tiffany, do you have any uh additional comments or or shall we adjourn?
No final comments. I would just ask that this be put over to the next meeting. Thank you.
Great. So could I have a motion to adjourn forty one Redwood Road, twenty six Cove Road to the?
February twentieth.
February, February twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting. All seconds. All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, great, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is twelve Glover Street.
Good evening, Anthony and Laura, sixty eight Union Street. So uh, here we are again for twelve Glover Street. So just to recap a couple, um, what we discussed at the last hearing. We noted that of the eight original variances we were requesting, um, three of them have been eliminated altogether. Two of them have been significantly reduced and two others have been more um had smaller reductions. I think the concerns at the uh biggest sticking point with the board seem to be the um the um skywave uh variance, uh, which we have reduced um by another hundred feet. So it is now at um eight hundred thirty six cubic feet. So that is less than half of what we had originally. And uh, one thing that came up at the previous uh hearing was just sort of what the uh aggregate total of both the existing nonconforming and proposed nonconforming is. We all know that eight hundred thirty six cubic feet is within um present is is in itself within precedents of what what this board has granted in the past. Just to give you uh some examples for some recent projects that I've done that have been approved by this board. So forty eight Union Street, uh, six thousand four hundred eighty one cubic feet, uh, existing, uh, one thousand three hundred sixty one cubic feet approved for seven thousand eight hundred forty two cubic feet. For two oh seven Jermaine, which was just uh last uh we uh last month you approved. That was seven hundred, uh, seven thousand nine hundred seventy cubic feet existing and seven hundred fifty two cubic feet approved for a total of eight thousand seven hundred twenty two cubic feet. Two and two twelve Madison Street also approved last month. So uh, five thousand uh four hundred, four hundred four cubic feet, um, existing, one thousand nine hundred forty eight cubic feet approved uh for a total of seven thousand uh three hundred fifty two cubic feet. I'm going to ignore seventy Glover Street because that was a FEMA thing. That was the bulk of of that that skyplane that was requested. So it's not really an analog kind of thing and good out and analog. But one uh project I wanted to bring up was forty three Oakland, which was approved last year. You granted eight hundred twenty five cubic feet of uh cubic relief, which is almost exactly what we're asking for uh for twelve Glover Street. And the existing nonconforming there was eleven thousand fifty cubic feet. And the great thing is is that house is done now or just about done. So I mean, if you want to go take a look, I don't think anyone could ever say that that house is out of character for its neighborhood. And it's in very similar condition to twelve Glover Street and that the neighbors are fairly close to it. And um, in fact, um, forty three Oakland actually has even tighter um side yard setbacks. So I think uh, just getting back to what we're asking for here for uh twelve Glover Street, seven thousand four hundred seventy nine cubic feet existing, eight hundred thirty six cubic feet of relief um proposed for a total of eight thousand three hundred fifteen cubic feet. So once again, well within the um even the total of the existing and proposed nonconforming is within the uh within both precedents. Couple of other things that that came up at the last meeting, one was just a correction which I've made and it's in the new new drawings that you have on file. Just to the uh, the existing of north side elevation, getting that roof line correct. One change that we've done, which is one of the which is how we got that additional one uh four hundred eight cubic feet of additional reduction was just to kind of keep the existing uh roof line of the existing um kitchen wing instead of popping it up, which we had done in previous versions of that. Then the only, I think the only other thing that the the neighbor had a concern about was the um dormer window and privacy as far as that goes. And I just want to emphasize that that dormer window sill height is five feet, uh, five inches above um floor floor height. I'm five foot three, so I mean, nobody's nobody's gonna be able to see out of that light, that that window. It's there purely to bring light into the uh north northwestern light into the uh into the bedroom. Because right now, the only the other side, um, the other wall of that bedroom, the outside wall is um northeast exposure. So that's just to get some extra light inside. You'll never be able to see through it. But also add that, um, you know, this uh twelve Glover Street has already has four historic windows, which are on that north north elevation, right on the property line. And sixteen Glover Street has, I think, at least three um historic windows on the second floor facing the other way. So this is not going to increase any any black privacy that already exists there. We did actually originally have two, and I think this was a neighbor's suggestion was that if we could reduce it to one, and which we did. And that window, um, also just one more, one more thing about that window, it is three feet long or no, I'm sorry, three, the frame size is three foot foot six long by one foot six tall. So it's not a not a good window. It's about half the size of this. Or. That's it.
If I could just comment as well, I'm counsel for the applicant as well. Um, we did also, and I think the board received a letter withdrawing the opposition from both of the neighbors. We had conversations with both of them and the changes that you see today, including the window, are a result of those conversations. So I believe you received an email today from from counsel to both neighbors.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. Tiffany Scarletto, forty five Division Street, Sag Harbor for the applicant.
Great, thank you, Tiffany. Um, did we receive letters?
We did receive an email from the neighbors. We we received an email from uh the plans, but there was no email from.
I have an email from Katie Frank.
Okay, forward it to me?
Yes, I can certainly do that right now. I'm not sure if she knew who to send it to, so I'll send it to you right now. I think Katie is still there.
She's not.
Yeah, she's.
So this was sent to Carrie. Okay, I got it.
So Anthony, while that's happening, maybe you could show us exactly where you reduced the pyramid variance?
Sure. So I mean, you know, at the last hearing, we 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 talked about the the major reduction, which was was reworking this uh this back facade. So it's much less wide than it was previously. That additional one, I think it was, I don't remember, it was a hundred six or a hundred eight cubic feet, which is in the original version. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me, but I did have this sort of little, the the existing kitchen has this little sloped roof to it, right? And we had proposed to raise that up a little bit. But you know, I I can make the kitchen work without without needing to to do that by putting the cabinets against that low low uh wall height. So it's it's fine the way it is.
So all the reduction was was based in that area?
It was just just that area.
Okay, great, thank you.
When I redrew this existing roof line uh correctly, there was a very small reduction in the existing nonconforming. But I think it was like only like twenty five cubic feet, man. So it was really just a glaze. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. So Carrie, when you get that, maybe you could just.
Yeah.
Read it to us or something.
I won't get it here because my, I don't know.
Oh, oh.
Both Liz and Carrie, so perhaps Liz can read it.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I can read it. So it says, hi Carrie, we represent Ann Tate and Thomas Moore, owners of sixteen Glover Street and eight Glover Street. We have reviewed. We have reviewed 12 Glover Street's most recent plans that show only one proposed rear second story window reduced from two. Based on this most recent revision and prior revisions, our clients have decided to withdraw their opposition and are now in support of the application. We may not be in attendance during 12 Glover Street's presentation at tonight's CBA meeting. We kindly request that you share this information with the board in our absence. Thank you, Katie Frank.
Great, thank you. Thanks. So, um, do, if there are any questions from the board? For the applicant? So we'll, um, open up this.
Do you want the total pyramid variances?
Pardon me? The total pyramid variance, I believe, is, is, well, the, the variance they're requesting is for 836 cubic feet. The total that would be in violation of existing plus proposed is like 800, 315, 8,315, is that correct?
Yeah, 8,315.
But they've.
Existing and proposed.
But they've reduced the to 836. Okay, great. So, um, at this point, we'll open this up to the public to see if there's anyone here in the audience. Oh, sure.
The description of variance requests here seems old.
Yes, we're going to go through that before we make a decision. So, um, is there anyone in the audience to speak to 12 Glover Street? And what about Carrie? What about on Zoom? Okay, so Anthony, maybe at this point, just, um, to Alex's point, we could just quickly run through the, the variances and, and just to refresh this. So this is. Okay.
All right. So, um, I guess what I'll do is I'll read what we originally requested and, um, what.
Well, you could just, you could just read the points, one, two, and three, and just tell us what they've changed to. Yeah, we have the old one in front of us.
So number one, uh, the proposed side yard setback for north side to be 0.4 feet where 10 feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of 9.6 feet is required. That's been eliminated completely. Number two, the proposed side yard setback of the second story addition to be 4.1 feet where 10 feet is required. Therefore, the relief in the amount of 5.9 feet is required. That has been reduced to 9.5 feet. So, uh, 0.5 feet is required. Number three was pyramid intrusion of 1,774 cubic feet where zero is permitted. That's now been reduced to 836 cubic feet. Number four, the proposed side yard setback for the steps is 7.2 feet where 10 feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of 2.8 feet is required. That's been eliminated completely. Number five, the proposed building coverage is 31, uh, 30, proposed building coverage is 31% or 1,526 square feet. Where 20% or 984 feet is permitted and where 29.2% or 1,436 square feet is existing. That, uh, number five is no change. That's the only one of the eight that there was no change. Number six, the proposed lot coverage is to be 32.7% for 1,609 square feet. Where 25% or 1,230 square feet is permitted, where 30, 33% or 1,026 is, is existing. That's now been reduced to 32.1%. Number seven, the proposed total side yard to be, uh, 15.3 feet where 20 feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of 4.7 feet is required. Yeah, that's been eliminated completely. Seven is eliminated completely. Number eight is an expansion of a preexisting nonconforming structure by 23.9% of gross floor area. Where expansion of up to 50% is permitted pursuant to 300-12.6D1A. That's now been reduced slightly to 23.4%.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I can email these to, uh, this, this list to Liz or whoever.
Great. Thank you. Um, does the board, anybody on the board have any more questions?
I don't.
Okay, great. And Anthony, do you have any, and Tiffany, do you have anything further to add? Uh, because what we'll do is close the, the public hearing and then take a straw vote. Is Tiffany still with us?
Yep, she doesn't have any sugar with her.
Okay. Uh, you're, you're all finished, Anthony? Okay, great. Could I have a motion to close the pub? Excuse me. A motion to close the public hearing for 12 Glover Street?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I think that because of the reductions that are made, I know we're high on building coverage, but they've actually reduced lot coverage. And made a bunch of other reductions. I do in favor of this, at this point.
Any reductions?
Uh, Ham?
So the compromises were done and I'm in favor.
Great. And Tim?
In favor of granting the variance. I appreciate the reduction.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to, um, have our attorney, um, produce a approval for variances as we described for 12 Glover Street? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, great. So, um, next on the agenda is 20 Lighthouse Lane. Could I have a motion to adjourn 20 Lighthouse Lane to the 24th February? 20th, oh, I'm sorry. The 20th of February, 2024 CBA meeting.
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn 369 Madison Street to the February 20th, 2024 ZBA meeting?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn 20 Lighthouse Lane to the 20th, February 2024 ZBA meeting?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And next we have 80 High Street. Could I have a motion to adjourn 80 High Street to the February 20th, 2024 ZBA meeting?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you.
Quick question. Carrie, why, remind me again why 20 Lighthouse Lane?
One is for a gate and one is for reducing a fence or increasing a fence height. Fence?
Fence, yes.
Yeah. Deer fence, yeah. One's a gate, one's a deer fence. Now, we are at 30 Lighthouse Lane. Hi, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Matthew Powers, 30 Lighthouse Lane in Sag.
Great, thank you. And you submitted a new survey with some changes. Maybe you could just describe the changes to the board?
So on the survey, I know it's, uh, I'm not sure if I'm yours, it's my red and yellow, but, um, for a lot of people. So, um, there was, the board actually went back and removed 180 square feet of the slate patio that exists. So it's the far left side. And so then that's in addition to the slate patio on the far left side. The building that does not count for coverage, since walkways are excluded, however, we're willing to remove that and throw that gravel. Uh, and then finally, there's another decking, uh, directly next to the deck and the two-story residence that's a gravel. That was already removed. It was a handicap ramp about 50 square feet. So overall, um, we were able to remove 228 square feet of coverage, which moves this to, I believe, 30.1 square feet of coverage. And so a modest 1% increase on the overall.
And then the other thing was the pool equipment.
Yes, you can see the pool equipment actually swung around, uh, to the front and so no variance.
Great. So it's in a compliant location now. Great, thank you. Do any board members have any questions about this application?
You've made the necessary corrections. I'm in favor.
Great. Uh, I think that's great. We appreciate the changes you made. Questions or comments?
Always your reductions for the better. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great. So, uh, if there are no, oh, I guess we should ask the, is there anyone from the public here? And not, nobody on Zoom? Nope, no. Okay. Could I have a motion to close public hearing for 30 Lighthouse Lane?
I'll second.
All in favor? Great. Um, I'm in favor of this application. Do we have any negative review? Tim?
Well, it's increasing the lot coverage by 25%. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Ham, you're fine.
I said yes.
Okay, great. So. It, because it increases the lot coverage.
It would be said by 25%. It's by 1%.
Well, we've actually closed. We can't, can't, that's okay. But thank, thank you. Uh, any more comments or, okay, so we have four. Okay. Seemingly four. Okay.
Yes.
So, um, could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for the variances for 30 Lighthouse Lane? All in favor? Oh, no motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye, I mean, no.
Great, thank you. So we have a four to one decision. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so. There is no other business. So could I have a motion to close the public meeting? The zoning board of appeals for January 16th, 2024.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.